All right. So, welcome to this special meeting of the BVSD Board of Education on June 8th, 2021. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Jeff Hart.
Here.
Marcus.
Here.
Maya.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Lenny Maria.
Here.
Here. All right. So, this is a pretty exciting work session we're having here. We're getting an update from our Equity Council team members. We're very grateful to both Equity Councils, really. We have both the Youth Equity Council. I don't know what to call the other one, an adult Youth Equity Council. It sounds awkward. But we really appreciate all the work of the volunteers who stepped up and shared their voice into how we can improve our district from an equity perspective. And I just also want to thank Landon Mascarena, did I get that right? From CEI, who's more or less, okay, sorry, who has been helping us lead this initiative and all the talent and moderating skills that he has lent us in this process. And I'm so happy to welcome the youth in front of me. Welcome. Thank you so much for your work. And I'll turn it over to whoever goes on next.
Good evening, President Marcus, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. It's my pleasure to introduce the Youth Equity Council. And we had them come here tonight so that you would have kind of a highlight of who they are and what they stand for and what their actual purpose and mission is. And I'm going to introduce Amy Nelson, who is actually heading up the students and leading these students to the great work they're doing. So, Amy, I'll let you take it away.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. It's nice to be here with you tonight. My name is Amy Nelson. I'm the coordinator of Equity and Community Engagement. And I have been working with the Youth Equity Council since February. So, we formed in February, put out applications in February. We had over 300 applications. We selected 65 students. So, there's three of us. There's myself, Charlotte Abnaleti, Soraya Latif from CU's Public Achievement Program that helped me facilitate. I don't want to talk much. This is a youth-led group, and it really is them doing the work. So, I'm there. I'm helping them facilitate. I'm helping guide conversation. But it really is them leading the work. So, it sounds like they'd like to know a little bit about our mission and what it is that we're doing and what our passions are. So, anybody want to go first? We did not practice because it's summer break, so we're just going to go with it. Isaiah, you want to go first? Thank you.
Hi. I'm Isaiah. I'm a 10th grader at Centaurus High School. So, a little bit about our council. We all, I think I could speak for most of us. We all really wanted a place where youth can have a voice and to speak our voice and show us that we can make change in our district. A little bit about what we're trying to do is, we are in three different groups. And like, one's like a racism in education group, one's, I think it's...
Student Rights.
Student Rights. And the other is, I think, I'm in the racism in education group, for example, so I can talk more about that. So, what we're basically trying to do, we're really focusing on in the curriculum, we don't see, at least myself, I don't see myself as a black man represented in the curriculum in a positive way. I believe that slavery is very important to learn about, but also I also believe that we should learn about more achievements and things that black people have done and our culture in general. Also, another thing is, I think our main group, or our main goal really to start, or at least try to start for the next year coming, is focus groups at different schools. So, yeah, I don't know if anyone else wants to talk a little bit more about their group, but that's just my, our group specifically.
Thank you all, Dan.
Thank you.
Melissa, I'd like for you to talk a little bit about why this group was so important to you and how you felt before you joined the group. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Melissa Ariano, and I'm a junior, going to be a senior at Fairview High School. And when this opportunity came out to me, I was very excited. And at first, I was very nervous because I was like, there's no way I'm going to be one of the 65 out of 300 to be on this group. But then, when I got the email, I was super excited. I told everybody I knew, and I was like, this is where I'm going to start creating change. As a Mexican-American woman, I have always felt very, very out of place in our district. And so, I wanted to join this group because I want upcoming generations to feel safe, feel comfortable, and feel the right to be themselves in school and not have to hide what they truly are. And so, sorry, how am I going to respond? And so, that's why it was very important to me. I want to make sure that students that are coming after me do not have to face the inequity that I have faced and that other students have faced in this group. And it's really been amazing being part of such an amazing group with such amazing students. And everybody's voices are so powerful, and it's just been amazing to be a part of. And so, yeah, I'm very happy to be in this group. And I hope that we do create change for students coming after us. Thank you.
Maya, you want to jump up there now?
Hi. I'm Maya, and I just graduated from Boulder High School. I am multicultural. I'm also multi-ethnic and queer, so a lot of the issues that I've faced in school are intersectional. And I find that there are a lot of different directions that we need to be coming at these issues in. And I'm also in the Students for an Anti-Racist BVSD group. And a huge thing that I've been focusing on, rather than just focusing on the students, is also the environment of the teachers and the staff at BVSD. Because I have experienced a lot of inequity coming from staff at my school and at other schools as well. So, something that I'm passionate about is trying to come up with a plan to retrain teachers when these incidents come up. Because I've found when I've reported teachers and when my peers have reported teachers, that a lot of the time, it just gets swept under the rug or it's a situation where they're retiring soon. And so, there's no real sense of urgency. And, yeah, that's something I'm really passionate about right now, is being intersectional in the way that we look at these things.
Thank you, Maya. Sophie, you want to jump up?
Hi. My name is Sophie Reynolds Spear, and I will be going into Centaurus as a freshman next year. So, the reason I joined the Youth Equity Council is mainly because just of all the problems that I saw that I wanted to fix, mainly being like, just the lack of mental health, people who help with mental health, and the lack of representing there is, as well as just what Maya said, like, things being reported and not going through, or just people not really listening and not prioritizing these things that do need to be prioritized. I think it's super important that we, like, the whole BVSD community learns equity and how not to be biased. And that's one of the main reasons I joined the Equity Council. I'm not really sure.
That's also really great. Thanks, Sophie. Grace?
Hi. My name is Grace Mosley, and I'm going to be a junior at Brimfield High School. And I have been going to BVSD schools for like, my entire education. And I have always felt, like, I've always felt like a minority in schools. And I think that it's really important for students of color to have a place where they can go and be in a group with other people of minorities so they feel like they have a safe group to talk about their experiences. And I found that Equity Council is that kind of place for me. And I actually worked with one of the teachers at my school this year to form a group called Student Voice. And our goal is to make change in our school. And we have been working with just a small group since this is our first year, just basically building community within our school and making it known that there are safe places for minorities to go in schools. And I just wanted to thank Amy for helping create a place for us to feel like we are welcome to talk about these really important issues. And I'm also on Equity Council with Landon, and that's also a really great place because there are older members from our community that might have not known all the things that have been going on in our district. And I think that using the members of our community and teachers is also a very helpful tool in getting our message across. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, as you can see, I don't censor them at all. Like, this is youth voice, and we need to hear their voices, and we need to know what their experiences are in our schools. We can't truly do equity work if we don't know what's happening in our schools. And so, these students have really opened up our eyes in terms of what changes need to be made, and they really have been a part of helping guide the work that we are doing. And not just my team, not just the Equity Team. They've met with the Student Support Team, and they've met with other folks within the district, and will continue to do so next year so that they're all hearing. I told them that you may have questions for them, but I just want to tell you guys, I'm super, super proud of you. It is not easy to go in front of any group, let alone a group of adults, and share what you shared just now. Those are things that make us feel really vulnerable. So, I want to tell you how proud I am of you and continue to be amazed by the work that you do and the fact that you found your voices so young. So, I'm excited for next year. And our celebration coming. Any questions for the group?
Yeah. And thank you so much for being here and giving us an idea of the Youth Equity Council. Any questions right now? Richard?
Thank you all for being here. Wow. So, how are you enjoying your work with the Youth Equity Council?
I, for one, really enjoy it mainly because usually it's like, in smaller groups, so more people can talk. It's not just like you're waiting for your turn to talk. And I also enjoy it because it has a purpose. It's not just like mindless talk. It has, and, yeah, those are the main two reasons why I like it.
And how frequent do you all meet?
Sorry, what'd you say?
How frequent do you meet?
Well, we stopped meeting because of, we kind of accomplished our original goal, for the most part. But we meet about once, or we met at about once a week, except sometimes there were things that came up.
So, all the school Equity Council, Youth Equity Council members come together, or do they meet in separate schools? Or how does that work?
Usually, we meet on Mondays, which for most people is asynchronous day. So, we would all go on Zoom.
Thank you.
What'd you say? Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Kathy.
Yeah, Kathy.
Thank you so much for being here. I really appreciated, I liked what you had to say, Amy, about how they found their voice so early. Some people really wait until their 50s or 60s to find their voice. So, it's really awesome that you guys, everything you said was really moving. And I really liked what you said about thinking about the students that come after you too and not just trying to make it better for yourselves right now, but trying to change a system, which is really hard to do. If there is one or two things that we as a board could do to be supportive, does anybody, you have anything you could help us with so that we could support you more as you go forward?
I would just say, giving more sensitivity training to teachers, because I know that there's a lot of teachers that might not know that they're being like offensive or are kind of like calling out minorities but are doing that. And maybe as a second one, just kind of addressing issues more, like, with more intent other than just like to see what's happening and then like noting it down and moving past it. Because I think that if an incident does happen at a school, then it's really important to make sure that that never happens again.
Maya, do you want to answer that question? Yes. Graduate.
Yeah. Something else I would also like to address is, at my school, I've witnessed multiple situations of inequity with relationship to punishments of students. And I think that one of the uniting factors in all of those situations is that the counselors or the administration that they were sent to were all white. And I think that we need to do better, if not in our hiring practices at the very least in the way we handle these situations and making safe spaces for the students that are going into administration or are potentially in a situation where they've done something wrong, especially because a lot of minority students are a lot more afraid to set foot in those offices than white students because they know that the stakes are higher for them. And, yeah, that's probably one of the main things I would say. Other than that, probably just trying to hire more people of color into administration positions and teacher positions as well.
And I would just say to just keep listening to them. I think that oftentimes, youth groups and youth activism groups and all of my research, I'd say that in a lot of districts or community groups that they get involved in, that it's like exciting in the beginning, and they're heard, and then that, you know, filters over time. And I would say that these students, like, they're experiencing, these are their lived experiences in our district, and we should continue to listen to them. And so, that would be my biggest thing, is like, youth voice is so important. And if we're trying to create change, we should be listening to the folks that we are trying to create change for, even when it makes us uncomfortable. Some of the things that they're saying now are making me uncomfortable, right? Like, the things that they're going to say are not comfortable things, but they're important things. And they're all things that we talk about, but we're talking about them without the attachment of students and without their lived experiences being attached to it. And it really brings a whole nother level of understanding when we get to hear from them. So, that would be my advice, is just keep listening to them. Thank you so much. I've been hearing for the last year from Amy just how fantastic each of you are and about the phenomenal work you're doing. I hope we can keep hearing from folks from the Youth Equity Council in the upcoming year on their next projects. And just a big thank you. And I look forward to your Juneteenth celebration and hopefully to connecting with some of you there.
Just another quick question here and a comment. In the past, the Boulder Valley School District would sponsor youth conferences. And they were, how can I say this? They were sort of segregated, you know, by ethnicity. And I'm wondering if you all have thought about maybe doing some youth conferences like we had before, but more integrated?
I think I can speak for you all. I mean, we're happy to go anywhere, right? We'll go on a trip. We haven't thought about it yet. So, this was our initial year, and we really hadn't proposed a budget or anything like that because we were online. And so, we really just wanted to get to work. But now that we know that this is something that the district has invested in, something that will continue, I think as we propose a budget and our plan for the year, at the beginning of the year, that's definitely something that we can consider.
Can I tell you how happy I am that you all are here today? You know, this, board members, I cannot say enough good things about this group and the work that they're doing. And I don't, I don't know that you have comprehended the power that you have. You know, when we listen to our kids, they provide us a mirror as an organization to reflect on not what we want to see, but who we are. And it is just so powerful to have kids that are helping pushing us, making us better, making us answer the tough questions, and really holding us accountable. And so, I want to thank Amy Nelson, who's just done a beautiful, beautiful job. And for the five members of Youth Equity Council that are here today and the 60 that aren't, for those that hopefully are at home listening and watching, I am listening to you. I will always listen to you. I'm so thankful that you are giving us the gift of your time and thought to help BVSD become the very best school district in the country. I just wanted to say how proud I am of all of you, how happy I am that you're here, and just thank you all so very much.
Great. And I'll just offer also, there are a lot of things that are in our control, in our district, that we can change. And there are some things that are not in our direct control, but we can try to change them. And that's sometimes where the Board of Education might help, as well as our lobbyists. So, when you reach a barrier that feels like we can't change it, but we need to change the structure, a lot of us are very engaged with our legislators. We meet with both our state and federal legislators, and that is something that we can all do together. If you find yourselves in a place where we need to make a bigger change, then that's not quite in our control. So, that's it? Okay. Well, are we, then, this is wonderful. Thank you so much for being here. And I think we're then moving on to the Equity Council recommendations. Is that, do I have the sequence right? Yes?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next part of our agenda is to actually, Landon Mascareñas from the Colorado Education Initiative has been facilitating our Equity Council. As you know, our Equity Council has been in existence since last September. And the first order of agenda that they took was the issue around the SROs. Now, another issue has come up in that we have some recommendations for you from the Equity Council. They've worked all year, meeting at least what, every other week, in taking on the cultural holidays and curriculum. And I think what Landon's going to present tonight are some recommendations, talk about what those mean, and then take questions. So, Landon, I'll give it to you.
Okay. Am I on? I think so. Okay. Well, first off, I just want to share my unbelievable gratitude for the honor and privilege of working with Boulder Valley School District over this past year. You know, when this project first began, it was probably about, actually, you know, last summer. And it became with a conversation with the opportunity to, back to what Superintendent Anderson just mentioned, the opportunity to listen to your community. And, you know, in the middle of a global pandemic, in the middle of a racial reckoning, in the middle of an unbelievable set of crises, many school districts would have said, no, we don't have time for that. But instead, Boulder Valley School District stepped boldly into that space. And I want to just share my enormous gratitude for the opportunity to work alongside you in that pursuit. Because actually, in the midst of a crisis, to listen is even that much more important. It's so easy to pull up the fortress walls, to close off, but instead, to open up and say, what does it mean for us to co-create these solutions with the community alongside of us? It's hard. It's tough work. As we see in the news almost every single day, school districts struggle with this. And I think what you all have done over the course this year, both on, and not exactly on, you know, just any old topics, the topics of safety, security, the topics of trauma-informed approaches, the topics of holidays and culturally responsive instruction, these are big topics. And they demand big ideas and big listening from the community overall. So, I also want to share thanks to Mike Gratus for all your work, Mike, to shepherd the process over the course of this year. It's been an incredible part of it. And also to Amy, to see that Youth Equity Council, not only you're a part of the Equity Council and starting Youth Equity Council, but you've achieved all this academic and professional success this year too. So, I don't know where you find the time. But that's a part of, I think, the magic here in Boulder Valley, is you have some incredibly talented folks. So, let's begin with a reminder of the Boulder Valley School District Equity Council. It began in the fall with the idea of bringing together three different types of folks from your community. Those who you knew needed to be involved in such a process, those are community leaders, stakeholders, leaders inside your district and outside of your district, folks who applied. I remember you had over 900 applications for your Equity Council. And then, the third, groups of folks that actually may never have applied or may not be on your radar, that actually we randomly selected from across your community and invited them to participate in the process. I think this is best-in-class work for building a diverse and broad section of perspectives. And for the second phase of the recommendation, and I think this is pretty important, it was an issue that the superintendent asks the group to take on. In the case of the work this spring, it was the issue of holidays, how to appropriately discuss and celebrate and appreciate cultural moments such as these, and also the work of culturally responsive instruction and curriculum. So, the recommendations that we're bringing today are not, as a reminder also, in terms of our process, they are derived from a consensus-based process, which means that instead of just a 50-plus-one vote in the Equity Council, we achieve consensus, which means that around 90, 85, 90% of the full council agrees with the recommendation, which means it takes a little more time. But I think what then, what you get to see in front of you here today, board, and my gratitude to you all as well, in particular, board members Sweeney Moran and Garcia, for your constant engagement for the council over the course of this year in championing their voice, this means that these are recommendations that I think you can take seriously. They are actually a real North Star signal for the superintendent and the board. They are not setting a, you know, this turn left here and then turn right here, but rather, hey, here are some real big ideas that we think need to be taken on around this particular issue. The council wanted to set a set of opening statements for consideration. These came through the recommendation process. But this is, and this first statement, I think, is pretty important from a recommendation set, to think through the set of recommendations we're about to get through. I think someone else just joined, maybe. Is that some of these recommendations, we talk a lot about in the Equity work that we do at the Colorado Education Initiative and with other districts and other schools and other regions, that there's self-site sector implications, that we have to do this work ourselves in the group of people we're proximate to and then the overall system itself. So, when you look through these recommendations, you should think about them through that lens. What's the implication for an individual teacher, the individual for a school, and the individual for the system overall? And also, with a lot of discussion of what does it mean to be equity-seeking, which is a word and term that we use a lot in the Equity Council, not that equity is a destination you arrive at, but rather a process of examination, of understanding, of unfolding, that essentially brings constant self-awareness and that constant self-examination, that mirror that Superintendent Anderson spoke to. That's a part of the co-creation and listening process that any organization that seeks equity should go through. So, one of the other things that they wanted to also make sure was really clear, not essentially a recommendation, but rather a posture that the council is requesting and suggesting the district take on, is that a part of this work has to be to seek out and learn from other exemplar districts around the country. You know, this is a real frontier of work, and a lot of places are approaching some innovative ways. And that there was a hope from the council that not only could this be a conversation to hold a mirror up to Boulder, but to hold a, maybe a looking glass to other districts around the country who are doing some really good work. So, a charge potentially for Amy and her colleagues and other folks around the staff to think through. And then also importantly, one of the things we heard over and over again from pretty much every single speaker that we heard from, was that BVSD staff, whether it's in the curriculum or in the taking on cultural celebrations and holidays, really should be approaching this from a learning stance, not a stance of, oh, now I understand how to do this. This is the district guidance, so now I'm going to do X. And that's when we get into trouble, right? That's what we should be really encouraging and thinking through in terms of the way we set up our staff and systems, is really taking that inquiry-learning posture to approach things from that perspective. In the first set of recommendations, we heard from a group, a significant group of folks from around your community, educators, district leaders, parents of color, the DAC, members of the LGBT community, the local religious leaders, and also the Youth Equity Council that we got a chance to hear from just now. And these recommendations kind of surface the kind of keystone ideas that came out. One recommendation is around food and celebration, that there is an opportunity to provide multicultural and culturally aware food across the district, that then is connected to the culture and complexity of that culture so that kids get to see themselves and the food they eat and the cultural connections that come out from that. Absolutely.
So, I just wanted to add to this one because if you work in equity, like, the first thing, that this feels very surface level. And so, for me, when I saw the food one, I was like, hmm, but this comes from our students. And so, our students really push that really their first experience of bullying based on their culture in our schools is around food, and it's in the cafeteria. And it was amazing the number of students on the Youth Equity Council that had that shared experience. And so, they shared that with the Equity Council. And so, this is what I was talking about, why it's so important to listen to their voices, because even me, with somebody so dedicated to equity, that's not something that I would have picked up on, or it's something that I even supported as a recommendation.
that then is connected to the culture and complexity of that culture, so that kids get to see themselves and the food they eat, and the cultural connections that come, that come out from that. Absolutely.
So, I just wanted to add to this one, because if you work in equity, like the first thing, that this feels very surface-level. And so for me, when I saw the food one, I was like, hmm, but this comes from our students. And so our students really pushed, that really their first experience of bullying, based on their culture in our schools, is around food, and it's in the cafeteria. And it was amazing, the number of students on the Youth Equity Council that had that shared experience. And so they shared that with the Equity Council. And so this is why, what I was talking about, why it's so important to listen to their voices, because even me, with somebody so dedicated to equity, that's not something that I would have picked up on, or it's something that I even supported as a recommendation. But our students said, this is the first, that was their first experience of bullying in our schools. And so it's important to them, so it's important to me and the rest of the Equity Council.
I really appreciate that, Amy. I think that this is also connecting to that statement around a learning posture, is that the way that we get to tokenization in this recommendation is different than actually saying, hey, let's approach communities in an appreciative, inquiry-based way. This recommendation includes a lot of text, but I think fundamentally, it's about having opportunities in every school and across the district to showcase different cultures, different identities, different experiences, notable individuals from across cultures and perspectives. Something, again, we heard from our students, and I think that our educators were yearning for. Also, people, I think, came up multiple times, and I think we see this in the national discussion as well, is that our typical approach, or I guess our past approach of a month where we celebrate a culture, and then unplug it from our curriculum and from our discussion, is fundamentally insufficient. And this has to be a year-long, ongoing process that not only infuses into the holidays, but in the curriculum as well. This was a really important recommendation around the considerations that need to take place. Every year, the Boulder Valley School District sends out guidance to teachers around holidays. And so the, while the Equity Council got to review that guidance, they were suggesting a potential even further North Star around how to approach holidays and appreciation, essentially signaling to teachers and staff around tests, quizzes, or project due dates, acknowledging that certain communities have a particular opportunity to be involved in those celebrations themselves. So, you know, when you're in, when you're a part of a school community, that they should be involved in the planning of that process in particular. And also, building some nudging and awareness for teachers and educators around upcoming holidays and celebrations with ideas and resources for that, which you'll see in a later recommendation. You want to share anything with this one? You feel good? Okay. This one I've already spoken to. This is the co-creation with external partners. Came up over and over again, we heard from district leaders, teachers. I think there's a, there's a concern of, you know, the co-creation that you've exemplified in the Equity Council and in the Youth Equity Council, now that spirit's got to move to the schools. And when you have cultural communities in schools, there ought to be an opportunity to include them in the planning and design of particular celebrations and appreciations.
I think with this in particular, I think the district itself also should make a point of not having certain meetings and important events on these days as well, not just in school, but in general. There are times when you can't make a meeting because of this, or something like that. So, it goes to the staff and administration as well. So I, I don't know if that is, to me, it's sort of implied, but I would like to be a little bit more specific, that also, this, this calls for meetings and all of that stuff, in addition to quizzes and tests.
I think that, that is totally in the spirit of this recommendation, and also in the letter. You see that in the second sentence right there, from the district, schools, and individual teachers, thinking through that co-creation process, and also that opening frame around self-site sector, is that, yes, it is true, we need to do that at the school level, but I think the Equity Council would completely agree that it also is a district opportunity and obligation as well.
Yeah, I'm just going to piggyback on what Stacy said, because it just resonates. I'll remember when, and this might have been eight years ago, they had student count on Yom Kippur. And it was just incredible. I mean, people were like, well, I'm not going to school, are you not going to count my child today? And it was just very insensitive.
Well, and I think that also in this recommendation is the community groups that the Equity Council is suggesting the district and school communities co-create with as well. And I think we heard over and over again from our community partners, that they are open and excited about partnering with Boulder Valley School District on thinking through some of these questions at a deeper level. Our next set of recommendations was in the second phase of the Equity Council process, which was around culturally responsive curriculum. In this case, we heard from district leaders who are thinking through this issue, educators. We heard from some really incredible students at Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Early College, Endeavor Public Schools. We heard from some local Latinx community leaders. And we heard from a couple of local bookstores, from the Tattered Cover and the Boulder Bookstore, talking through not only how they are thinking about this in terms of diversifying the books that show up on the shelves in their, in their stores, but also opportunities to partner with Boulder Valley School District around thinking through this and connections, which of course, in the case of the Boulder Bookstore, is already in play in lots of ways. The first recommendation here was to audit the syllabi. And this was really an opportunity to say, okay, if we're going to be looking through the syllabi, how do we think through ethnicity, race, region, geography, and gender? I think you heard this directly from the students, just as we got started. The opportunity to add on to the existing narratives, curriculum, and ideas that are currently at play. And then, of course, the Equity Council, I think, with the purpose of being very specific, saying, here's who are some great groups to start working with as you are building out potentially what that looks like. There was also a discussion that there had been a little more work done in this space from the elementary level, and there could be an additional opportunity at the secondary level as well. This next recommendation, which is another opportunity for co-creation, building a task force with youth voices, leaders from around the community and the district, to actually build standards for ethnic studies development. We know that, and in fact, there's actually an increasing set of research that shows that ethnic studies courses and courses that connect to the identities of our young students engage them at a fundamentally deep level, but only if they're done well. And so the Equity Council, I think, was putting forward a recommendation here to take on that question, to build some guidelines and build out for what that looks like. And I, we heard from Sam Messier around some of the work they're already doing in that space. But I think the council felt like there was an opportunity to go even deeper. At this recommendation is about how to think through the diverse representation. And one of the big questions, I think, that came up amongst educators and school leaders and district staff, and I think a lot of Equity Council members, was what to do in the, in the subject of, and when the curriculum is included, and guidance for them around opting out of curriculum pieces. We know that right now, there's kind of unevenness around school protocol, around when certain curriculum shows up. And so there was an opportunity here from the Boulder, from the Equity Task Force, to think through what would it mean to create some clearer standards and guidelines for how districts, how schools and educators should approach that issue. This recommendation is around the issue of a resource platform. Educators that we heard from, who are actually leading some really talented work in this space, also said that they would really appreciate the opportunity to share resources across the district in this. And that actually, there was work to be learned from each other, opportunities to learn from each other, and to share. And that there would have been, not really, that often they feel alone, and kind of on an island when taking this on in their schools. And there really needed to be an opportunity to leverage the incredible curricular resources you all are developing for a shared resource hub and platform in this space. This next recommendation is around teacher training opportunities. We heard from the district that they're taking on, take teacher training around culturally responsive instruction and approaches. But the Equity Council is suggesting that it should be both required and incentivized. I think that it's, I think, again, I think this is a discussion in our Equity Council around this idea of, you know, it's not just enough to require it, but it needs to be incentivized. How do you actually create an opportunity for a teacher to know, or an educator to know, that it's something that actually is going to benefit them in the classroom, and actually you're holding that accountability versus support in balance with each other? And then, the last recommendation, connected to the kind of resource hub, was the idea of exemplary classrooms. How do you recognize your great and talented teachers who are doing this work? You have a lot of exceptional educators in BVSD who are probably national leaders in this space. How do you showcase that? How do you help other teachers learn from them? And how do you help them learn from each other? And it felt like a really great opportunity, the Equity Council saw, as an opportunity to lift up and build bright spots, not only in, in classrooms, but in schools and across the entire district itself. Yeah, go for it.
So what I'll add to that one is just that, so we heard from teachers. And so what teachers were saying, and I think something that we're really lucky about in this district, is we have a lot of teachers that want to do this, and they'd want to do this right, and they want to do this well. And I know the students spoke to some of the bias and some of the inequities that they experienced. But oftentimes, teachers are really struggling with how to do this right. Because of the communities that they grew up in, maybe weren't diverse, and, and they didn't receive the, some culturally responsive pedagogy instruction when they were in college, like they really feel ill-equipped with skills. And so a lot of the last three recommendations all tie together, and are all based on that. It's teachers that really, really want to do well, and feel like they're not receiving, there's not enough opportunities for training, and that there's no exemplars, and that there's not other folks that they feel like that they can go to, or that there's not enough folks that they feel like they can go to. So all of those things are connected, and really surround teachers that are committed to doing the work that the Youth Equity Council just spoke about, wanting to make experiences better for our youth, but really feeling like they don't, at this point, have the skills that they need to do so.
And one of the things I would also add on to that, too, because that's really, really important, to also think through the intentional inclusion in this recommendation of families and students to also be a part of visiting those classrooms, so that parents and students also have a sense of perspective around how it really looks, so that we can actually set understanding. Because that's a really, also, very uneven thing in a lot of these discussions.
Okay. So Cathy?
I just have a question on this last one. It's awesome that there are teachers who are stepping forward to want to improve. What do you do about those teachers who probably really need to step forward, and are saying, I'm fine? Do you have any advice for that situation?
I, I think that, you know, it poses an opportunity, right? I think that, that we all, as educators, have to learn and grow. I think that the power of these recommendations are, they come from our community and come from our kids. And I, in my experience, you know, and I, and I think this exemplar classroom piece is a really, really important step within the recommendations. I think that, that folks have to see it in action, to be able to understand it, embrace it, and improve. Just like, and we are always working with teachers to, to get better. And sometimes, you know, teachers do get better, and other times, you know, we have to, you know, go through other avenues. But, but I feel like there's a lot of strengths in this recommendation that will allow us to set up the conditions for, for all teachers to be successful in this work.
I can add one thing. I'll just speak to Monarch High School's equity team. So all of our high schools are doing the EOS work right now, equal opportunity schools. And so Monarch's equity team had this conversation, and they, you know, like, like any school, they have a few that maybe aren't as excited about this work. And their idea is they'll be the odd ones out. Like, as we continue to expand this work, and, and, you know, we are all committed as a staff, then they're going to eventually join on. If we have, you know, 10 out of 11 teachers in the math department that are excited about this work, eventually you're going to want to participate in the conversation. And a lot of the work that we've been doing with schools is building the capacity to call people in. So rather than call people out, so we don't call those teachers out, we figure out ways to call them in. And so we figure out what, what that in is. So there's something that we agree on. We all care about kids. We are all showing up to classrooms. We may use different vocabulary. There's definitely trigger words in our current political climate, so it may be staying around those, away from those trigger words as we have those conversations. But we work really hard to figure out, how do we call people in to this work?
Other questions?
Can I say something? This is Donna.
Sure, Donna.
Yeah, I appreciate everything everyone said. I raised my hand during the student part, and, and I did appreciate hearing from them. I think what was just said is, it's so important for, it's hard for me to hear from so many students that, you know, some, that there are so many teachers that are an issue, a problem. And I think that's one of the, the things that we, that I saw in the slide presentation, that, that we're going to tackle as a district. And I'm happy to hear that. I think it's important to, that teachers don't feel threatened as well. And, and I think that, that you guys hit the nail on the head when you, you said, you know, you're going to approach it lightly, and as more people get on board, more will join. I don't, I, I think some teachers have expressed to me that they feel pressured into the scenario evolve or dissolve. And, but I think you have to go with teachers, it's a slow process, it's a big change. I mean, they might be near retirement, and all their life, they, they didn't know certain things. Some major corporations have just put out a list of terms that are offensive, and some of them were even surprising to me. I didn't know rule of thumb is an offensive term. But after I read through 50 of them, that not only Ball, but Xylex, and several other companies put out some of the same memorandum, it, it's, it's a slow awakening and awareness that, that I think our teachers, especially teachers that, that have been in the district for many, many years. So, thank you for, for this. I'm glad to see that there's not only concerns, but there's recommendations for change. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Katie?
Well, mine isn't really a question, but a comment on anticipating parents objecting, because we can probably anticipate, as we said, teachers objecting. And to know in advance how we're going to deal with that, rather than waiting for it to happen, and then trying to figure out how to deal with it. And it makes me think of that teacher in Virginia, who refused to use the pronouns that one of his students preferred, and he based it on his Christian faith. And you can't really argue with people about their religion and their interpretation of their own religions. But, so, I mean, I'm thinking, things like that are going to come up. And I'm glad we're thinking in advance about dealing with it.
So I would just say, they're, they're not coming up, they're already happening. Like, that's things that we've had to deal with for the entire year. And I feel like I make, I work with an amazing district team, and a, never in isolation. And so there's a team that is probably, I don't know, across six or seven departments, that has come together, because there are parents and community members that have reached out to us, pushing back on some of the things that teachers are doing, whether that's anti-racism work, or even just, you know, having diverse texts in their classroom. There's been a lot of pushback, and, and we've had a lot of administrators and teachers that reach out for support, and just want to know the same thing. They want to be able to call people into the conversation and not engage in a back and forth. And so we, we've supported a lot of teachers. Randy's also been super helpful in helping me guide some of those conversations. So figuring out ways to, to, to call people in, but then we have this district team that's working together and putting together a resource for administrators and schools that will help them engage in those conversations. So that'll be ready in the fall.
Amy and Landon, just thank you so much first. I feel like the work you've done with Equity Council, both of you and Amy in our school district, to bring people together and to push these issues forward, I just can't say enough. And Mike to you as well, for the, the incredible help and leadership you've given to our Equity Council in this past year. Rob, my question is for you. When we're looking at the set of recommendations, I think one of the things I like most about it is that it brings so many different things we've talked about, sort of, in one place together, for us to track them. So I'm wondering if that, it's how we're going to approach this. Can we deal with this like we did with the SROs, and sort of get a timeline for getting updates on the various components of this, you know, throughout the course of the next year, and hear from team members, et cetera, so we can sort of keep an eye on all of it?
I think what I'd first like to do, Board members, is to, is to bring these recommendations. I mean, you know, at the surface level, these, these recommendations look fantastic. The timelines have to be also weaved into the other work that we're talking about and committing to, which also works into our board prioritization of topics and things that we, as a board, want to commit to. And so I want to make sure that we take this back to our team, sit down with Amy, let's talk about how this aligns with the work that's already happening in the strategic plan, do a bit of a crosswalk. Which, what of this work is new work? Which of this work is work that we had already planned on doing, but gives us more focus and direction? And then, once we have that, that I think that would be appropriate to bring that back to the board, and kind of let you know where we are, and what our plan is moving forward. And we could do that through board prioritization. That seems like the best time to probably do that. And then, at that time, we could talk about how we would bring back the, the information on how the updates of the progress is going to the board.
I think that's absolutely right. I mean, I look forward to what that looks like, and I think those are the right steps. I'm only suggesting that I think it would be great if we could sort of keep these set of recommendations together, in a way that lets us focus on the big picture, and how each of them is moving forward, rather than separating them into, what is it, 15 disparate elements, that I feel like become harder and harder to track.
Well, I want to honor the work of the Equity Council. I want to honor the time and effort and energy of everybody who spent so much time thinking about this, within our community, within our district. And so I do, I do think that makes sense.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I was, it was great to see that there's overlap with what's in our strategic plan already. So it's not a completely disparate piece of work that So it's not a completely disparate piece of work that's coming in, but a lot of the, some of the groundwork might have been laid, and now we're expanding it and making it better, which is awesome. I had a couple of questions. One is, what does DEI stand for in Recommendation 3?
What does DEI stand for in Recommendation?
DEI, yes.
Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Okay. And is that a term that's recognizable? Okay, perfect.
We can add it to the list, too, or make an adjustment on the deck for you.
Okay. That's just showing my ignorance. And the, one of the things I really liked, we had a work session on culturally responsive instruction a couple weeks ago. And one of the things that helped me a lot is that they gave specific examples of times when it was not culturally responsive. And it's getting to the exemplar piece, but it's really helpful as a board member when things are really specific, so I can even relate them back to me and my language or my behavior and say, hey, oh yeah, I get it, I didn't know that, but now I know. And so anytime that can be shared with the board, I think it would be great. The other question I had is, did you all talk about how this interacts with AP and IB classes? So one of our goals is to get as many kids into IB and AP, partly because they can get college credit and reduce their costs, but we don't control those classes. So how, did that come up at all?
I spoke about it a little bit with the Council, just because I've been such a huge part of the equal opportunity schools work and worked directly with two of our high schools around that. So we talked about the work that is happening, and they also heard from our youth, and our youth really spoke to that. And some of them talked about reasons that they didn't feel comfortable in some of their AP classes. And some examples of that are like, having to be like the resident expert anytime, you know, a character of color was in a book or things like that. And so all of our high schools are participating in a culturally responsive training at the start of the school year. Every single high school teacher is participating in that. All five of our principals have agreed. And so I feel like our high schools are really doing the work already. And I think something that's amazing about our high schools is like, it was their decision to do all teachers. We were going to focus just on AP teachers, and because of the work that we're doing and then recognizing the importance of it, they're like, no, this is really important for all of our teachers to be a part of. And so the conversation has come up through that, but not, I don't think that the Equity Council, you know, discussed it specifically, other than hearing reports from me and the work that's happening.
Yeah, it'd be good just to learn more over time. And again, that's something where Jefferson County really got into the curriculum issues with AP curriculum as well. But we might want to think about giving feedback to the AP group because we're really dictated by that, so. Richard?
I just want to echo Lisa's comments and everybody else's comments. I think you guys did a tremendous job putting this together. And Landon, your leadership, your facilitation skills, I think, are just exemplar, okay, in terms of the way you conducted the meetings and all of that. And Amy, I think you're doing a great job. I just get a little flashback, you know, when we were having some conversations, I believe it was the last Equity Council meeting that we had, and you cautioned people because you said something to the extent of, I'm the Equity Department. So the reason I'm saying this is because I think we need to beef up the Equity Department and make it, resource it a lot better, and so that we can get some of this work done, too, because it seems to me like if you're the Equity Department, you've got a lot of work to do, and you need help, you need support. And Mike, you know, your leadership in terms of this particular process was also excellent, and I just can't say enough about your involvement with it. I mean, you know, when you have an assistant superintendent to lead and at least oversee some of the work that's being done here, that says a lot for this district. It doesn't happen, you know, in other districts in terms of an assistant superintendent being in charge of making sure work gets done. And just, Landon, my compliments to you and also to the, your team. I think your team did an excellent job, too, so thank them for me.
Well, great. Mike?
I would just say one last thing before we end. I really want to do a shout-out to Colorado Education Initiative for the facilitation and the work that Landon and his crew did. We came a long way in a short time, and I think due to their facilitation really pushed us, drove us to think and to really, really take a serious approach to what we wanted to do and how we wanted to recommend, make these recommendations to the board. And I really appreciate the board for your candid listening and your comments. It does make a validation of people being heard, and I hope the Equity Council's listening, that you're being heard, that that input's important to us, because, and to Dr. Anderson's point, it makes us a better district. So thank you, Landon, and thank you, CEI, and a special shout-out to you, Amy, for your leadership and what's going on with the Youth Equity Council, but not only that, but what's going on with our teachers. I really appreciate that.
Great. Well, our next meeting starts in a couple minutes. Do you have something to say?
Sorry. So I just wanted to respond really quick to Richard's comment, just about me being the Equity Team. So that was, we had a conversation in the Equity Council, and one of the recommendations specifically said, the Equity and Partnerships Team will audit all of the syllabi in the district. And I was like, wait a second. So I just want to respond that that's what it was about. Sam and I have had some really great conversations, as we'll be working closely together. And I feel really comfortable with the conversations that we had. So with her support and the support of Dr. Cruz, I'm really excited about the work that's coming, and I feel supported at this point. And so we just talked about that there's a lot of overlap between myself and CLDE team. And so I was, my suggestion to the committee was that we weren't so explicit about who or what department was going to do the work, but more that this work needed to be done and shared by multiple people. And then I just want to, I mean, I really appreciate the gratitude that I have, that you all have expressed tonight, and I just want to return that gratitude. I would say this year, and this year, being my first year as a district leader, I feel seen, I feel valued, and I feel heard. I feel like every space that I show up to, that people are willing to listen, and they're willing to listen to, you know, the voices of people that typically their voices aren't heard within our district. And so I've really appreciated, I just want to extend gratitude back to you all, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Amy, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, and I know you appreciate everything that we're doing for the, for your work, but I still think we need to elevate it. And I'll be bringing this up.
All right. Well, thank you again so much. Okay.
I just wanted to say, just real briefly, I just wanted to share the gratitude back as well. This has been a privilege of a lifetime. I think I shared this in my first meeting with you all, but it was 100 years ago next year, my grandma came to Boulder from Mexico. And her experience in the school district was not very positive because of her language, because of her culture, because of her food. She tells that story a lot. She still tells it. She's 93. And I think a part of our journey in life is to understand and break the cycle of trauma, break the cycle. And there's people on this board who've spent their lifetime and career doing it, so I honor that. And to be able to help and be a part of that process in Boulder truly has been a privilege. So thank you for the opportunity. It's your exceptional work now, and I know you'll do great things with it.
I just have one more question about that, the teacher training for high schools. Rob, is that something that we, as board members, could attend?
Let me get more information on the details of that, and then I'll share that we all can make a decision on how that would be the best way to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, you know, be where a board member shouldn't be, but on the other hand, it really interests me as well to learn some of these things. And thank you. I didn't say thank you. Thank you so much. The work has been incredible, and I've been around the district long enough to see the district have grand plans that they start, and that's it, so.
Yeah, Katie, to your point, I think we had agreed to do some type of diversity training a year ago, and we still haven't done that. So if someone can help the board get their training, we still have not done that, and it's important. All right, well, thank you so much. And why don't we just take a one-minute break before we start our next meeting?